Right.
This meeting in order, supervisor Eto'o.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible and liberate and eternal.
Yes, I'd like to remain standing for a moment of silence for all those who lost their life over in Israel. Thank you.
Mr. Conover.
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett. Mr. Diamond.
Here.
Mr. McDevitt.
Here.
Ms. Bramer. Mr. Bruno.
Here.
Mr. Driscoll.
Here.
Mrs. Fraser. Mr. Drossi.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Dickinson. Mr. Merlino. Mr. Schraub.
Here.
Mr. Wild.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Eto'o.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Runyon.
Here.
Chairman Garrity.
Here.
Quorum is established.
Hey, I'll open up the, uh, meeting to privilege of four and a public comment before we start the record portion of the meeting. Anybody wish to address the board, please step up. And get your name and, uh, address for the record, please.
Morning Supervisors, I'm here to make a comment, um, but I understand that, uh, in the county budget, you, there's been a line item of twenty thousand dollars increase for the sheriff. I am totally against that. He came before the board in July and they rejected it. And now we're going to slip it in, so I'd like it to be removed from the budget of this year.
Just your name for the record.
Uh, sorry, Peter Caldwell.
Anybody else wish to address the board?
Supervisor McGowan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. I'd like to open up this morning, uh, with a question. I, there's a lot of, uh, stuff going on with the, uh, the employee, uh, valuation, and I would just like to go on the record and, and have, because, you know, it's amazing how quick my phone starts ringing, um, when, uh, things, decisions are made around here sometimes, uh, and pretty quick. So I would just like someone to explain how we're, you know, what we're looking for, uh, because the word was out that we were eliminating them, and now I hear that the elimination is not there, but we're working on another plan. So just like, uh, the other supervisors and, uh, the public to hear what we're doing about, and I'm curious, I, I don't want them to think they're going to be scared away, um. This is important, uh, on these evaluations. It's not, it's, it's not entirely, um, based on races, so.
Thank you. Any other?
I, I can't get a, we, we can't discuss this as a discussion.
Not at this time. Anybody other public comment?
Okay.
Okay. We need a motion approval minutes to September twelfth, twenty twenty three, uh, board meeting and October thirteenth special meeting. Both by supervisor Drossi, second by supervisor Runyon. Any discussion? Alls in favor, stick a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Here. Next, we have, uh, presentation of employees of the month. We actually have two employees of the month, uh, from, uh, one of the past months that they couldn't make it. They're both, uh, deputy fire coordinators. The first one is Ted Little. Ted serves in the North Country. It's been there for a lot of years. And then the second one is Chip Mellon, and I'll ask, uh, if he had Marie or would like to speak to those two employees.
Good morning. Um, I just want to let everybody know that, uh, we're very proud and happy to nominate these two individuals for employee of the month this month. Um, I'll talk about Chip Mellon. Chip has been with our office since two thousand eight. He holds a position of second deputy fire coordinator. He oversees the Warren County Marine Rescue Team, coordinating meetings, exercises, and making sure the team is ready to respond. He's also an important resource in the coordination of multiple agencies during water rescue calls. He has taken on additional responsibilities of being the training coordinator for the county, ensuring that the trainings necessary for volunteers is available through the New York State Office of Fire Prevention and Control, as well as other agencies. He's also part of the Training Center Committee as well, which we've been reviving to get that, uh, back up to where it needs to be. Um, Chip has also been dedicated to keeping the equipment at the office in operating order and spends many hours maintaining the equipment and making sure a mobile command unit is ready for deployment. Recent outings include the Hudson Valley Volunteer Firemen's Convention, the Adronak Balloon Festival, and it also is called upon to be used during exercises and drills. And aside from all of that, um, that he does here, he has been a volunteer for Bay Ridge Fire Company since he was sixteen years old. He has risen in the ranks and was fire chief from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand eight, and from two thousand eighteen to present. He spends countless hours at the station and also works remotely on his laptop while at home. He has also served many years on the Warren County Fire Advisory Board. And if you ask Chip for assistance, um, he will always help with anything you ask him to do. No questions asked. He's always there in response. Um, but above all, um, we just want to let you know that Chip is also husband to wife Maura and proud father to Kelly and Mark. And that's my half for Chip. Thank you. Yep. All right, thank you. And now I'm going to have Ralph Bartlett talk a little bit about, uh, Ted for us.
Morning. Uh, Ted Little began his employment with Warren County back in nineteen ninety-six. He just got out as chief in our fire department in Chestertown and began serving as a deputy fire coordinator. In twenty twenty-one, he took the role as acting fire coordinator for Warren County, fulfilling the requirements under the mutual aid plan with the state of New York. He performed his duty flawlessly and with respect to the position. He is instrumental in providing the resource to the departments in the northern part of the county. He can often be found on scenes during mutual aid calls, and he routinely attends meetings, including but not limited to the Warren County Fire Advisory Board Meeting, the chiefs and officers, and the Johnsburg Town Chiefs Meetings. In addition to his service in OES, he was a twenty-five-year member of the Chestertown Fire Department, where he served as chief from nineteen eighty-two to nineteen ninety-six. During that time, he was a member of the Warren County Fire Advisory Board and the County Chiefs and Officers Association. During that time, he mentored myself to follow in his footsteps to become the next chief of the department. Excuse me. And as he continues his membership, mentorship today, at OES with me, uh, as a county fire coordinator. Um, both, on a personal note, both Chip and Ted have selflessly assisted me in becoming fire coordinator. Yeah, answering my questions, providing direction, and making the transition to a new fire coordinator seamless for the fire service in Warren County. Uh, without the dedication of both of these members to OES into the fire service in Warren County, we would not be in the shape that we are in today. Thank you for, uh, awarding both of these, uh, well-deserved award.
Ted Little. Yep, you gonna say a few words or?
Go on, Chip. I'd just like to say I'm proud to be a part of, of emergency services. As Henry said, I've been doing this for forty-three years, so. Been very beneficial to me, be able to help people in, in Warren County, kind of Queensberry. And I'm just thankful for the support that the board supervisors gives the office to allow us to work out that.
And along with their certificates, John, the Warren County challenge point that he give to both of their representatives, and, uh, I'd like to go on and say I know both these guys personally for a long time, and, uh, they are there when you need them, and, uh, we're very fortunate to have them still serving Warren County. So thank you both. Chip. We've already did the pictures. You'll take that?
I will.
They should, they will take it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Chip. Next, uh, we'll read the legal notice for the public hearing on the local law number five in twenty twenty-three.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Warren, New York is considering the adoption of a proposed local law number five for the year twenty twenty-three. A local law creating a partial real property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers pursuant to New York State Real Property Tax Law, Section four sixty-six A. Notice is further given that pursuant to a resolution adopted by the Board of Supervisors on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Supervisors on October twentieth, twenty twenty-three at ten a.m. in the supervisors' rooms at the Warren County Municipal Center located at thirteen forty, State Route nine, Queensberry, New York, at which place and time all persons interested in the matter of such proposed local law number five for the year twenty twenty-three will heard, be heard concerning same. A copy of said local law is available for inspection during regular business hours by contacting the clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the above stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website.
Okay, I'll open this up, public hearing up. Anybody wish to comment on the, uh, tax exemption for the volunteer firefighters? Anybody, public? Board members? Supervisor McGowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I, uh, I firmly believe in this, uh, and I think it's a good move to, to show our appreciation for these volunteers, uh, one for risking their life and their times away from their family, you know, and, and, and hopefully this will help, uh, other volunteers to, uh, keep recruitment up. So I think this is a really, uh, uh, great direction that, uh, the county is going for. So thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board? Seeing no comment on this, I will close the public hearing on, uh, this local law. Uh, next will be, uh, local law number six of twenty twenty-three.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Warren, New York is considering the adoption of a proposed local law number six for the year twenty twenty-three, entitled a local law imposing an additional mortgage recording tax in Warren County. Notice is further given that pursuant to a resolution adopted by the Board of Supervisors on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Supervisors on October twentieth, twenty twenty-three at ten a.m. in the supervisors' rooms at the Warren County Municipal Center, thirteen forty, State Route nine, Queensberry, New York, at which time and place all persons interested in this matter of such proposed local law number six for the year twenty twenty-three will be heard concerning same. A copy of said local law is available for inspection during regular business hours by contacting the clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the above stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website.
Okay, anybody from the public wish to comment on this, uh, proposed local law? Any member of the Board of Supervisors? All right, we'll leave this public hearing open for a little bit. We'll move on to report by committee chairs. My report, September, uh, twelfth, attended board supervisors' meetings, the fifteenth, I, uh, went to the grand opening of the disc golf course at the Fish Hattery. Um, it's, uh, it's a challenging, and the first time I threw a frisbee in probably fifteen, twenty years. So anybody who likes a little exercise and at a nice setting, I would suggest you head to the Fish Hattery and try that disc golf course. One telltale stone, though, if you come with a bag full of, uh, frisbees, we're in troubles, so. Uh, September twentieth, attended criminal justice, uh, public safety, health services, and human services committee meetings. On the twenty-first, attended, uh, county facilities, public works, parks, O and M committee meetings. The twenty-seventh, I attended APA Local Government Meeting in Minerva, and also the AATV meeting in Minerva. The twenty-eighth, I attended the Legislative Rules and Government Operations, Tourism, and Personnel Administration, Higher Education, Finance Committee meetings. October fourth, I attended a budget team meeting here at the county. On the twelfth, I attended the Town Highway Association meeting over at the Dockside, which they spoke about funding for highway departments. On October thirteenth, I st- attended our special board meeting. And October seventeenth, I attended the tourism and budget committee meetings. And I also like to report that Supervisor Fraser is home. I called her and was able to talk to her a couple of days ago. She's in good spirits. Uh, she's working on rehabbing, and she hopes to be back down here. She misses everybody. She thanks everybody for your concerns and, uh, well wishes that you gave her while she is, uh, in the hospital and, um, but I can say, you know, you've had no call sometime. She's home now and, uh, she's, uh, doing very well. And as we all saw, uh, at the last board meeting, Dennis made it back for a, our brief meeting, and, uh, we're glad that he's on demand also. So to those two, uh, supervisors, we hope to see him back here soon. Uh, okay, we're gonna start with supervisor. Supervisor Eto'o, any report?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, like other supervisors, I had the privilege of serving at the Adronic balloon festival this month. Um, I met with Rob York in late September, uh, to discuss the operations and needs of Community Services Office. I received a full tour of the sheriff's office inside each inmate pod, et cetera, with Sheriff LaFarr and his undersheriff. Uh, last night I had the pleasure of attending the hundredth annual, uh, anniversary of the Tri-Kinney United Way. And, uh, opening ceremony tonight for Special Olympics has been shifted from City Park to Queensberry High School at seven thirty. That's my report.
Thank you. Supervisor Tannups.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the budget committee met, uh, this past Monday or Tuesday, October seventeenth. Uh, I ran through with the committee and those present to, uh, where we're at and in the, uh, the plan going, going forward, and, uh, the budget will be, uh, submitted by the end of the month. So that's where we're at.
Thank you. Supervisor Runyon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the finance committee met on September twenty-eighth. There are six resolutions in your packet resulting from that meeting. The first one is number four forty-five, which is making supplemental appropriations to the Warren County budget for twenty twenty-three. The next one is Resolution four sixty-seven, which is an inter-fund transfer to appropriate funds from the airport repair and projects reserved to the capital projects. The next one is number four sixty-eight, authorizing an agreement with Tyler Technologies to provide server mitigation services for the treasurer's office. The next one is number four sixty-nine, which is from the Department of Real Property Tax Services, canceling or correcting of assessments and refunds or chargebacks of taxes related to a pilot program. Um, and then there's number four seventy, authorizing the appropriation of funds from the Computer Reserve Fund to the IT budget to purchase computers and related equipment and software. And the last one is number four seventy-one, authorizing the appropriation of funds from the General Fund Unappropriate Fund Balance to the Sheriff's Office Budget um, to cover the unanticipated cost of a power system. Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Thank you. Supervisor Conover.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the, uh, Public Works Committee, uh, met on September twenty-first. Uh, represented in your packet by resolutions four sixty-two, four sixty-three, and four sixty-four. Four sixty-two is the, um, lease agreement, uh, uh, that we have with Anronak Timberlands LLC for, uh, access to, uh, the, uh, sweet fire tower. Um, it's a slight increase from last year, a hundred and twenty-five dollars, and, um, and I certainly hope that receives your support here today. Uh, resolutions four sixty-three and four sixty-four are the awards for solid waste and recycling, as you know, the county prepares those visits and goes out annually, or goes out, uh, on terms, uh, for, uh, services in this regard, and what you have in front of you today, uh, are the, uh, are the awards, uh, for solid waste and recycling services, uh, the, um, and this is attached to your resolutions. And, uh, and then once again, I would hope that that would meet with your support today. And that concludes my report.
Supervisor Diamond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No reports today.
Supervisor.
David. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Resolution four forty-nine, it looks like a, um, it's just an amendment to our county fair housing policy, and it's just, uh, seems to be a, a change to and modification to ensure that we're meeting all the criteria of, 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 of federal law. The, uh, our local development corporation, LDC, met yesterday, and I, I, and one thing that was brought up that I think was, uh, reasonably important, uh, the, uh, um, and that was the number of successful local businesses, uh, that have paid off in full, uh, any, uh, indebtedness that they incurred to, uh, to get their businesses started, uh, uh, the, uh, they LDCs, uh, have a, have a function to, um, provide jobs to, to our area and to enable, uh, these corporations to, to pay taxes, uh, which, which helps us all. But they listed some of the organizations that have indeed, uh, uh, met this criteria, have, have paid their taxes, have, have, uh, and, and are successful organizations. Uh, and let me just list a couple of them. Uh, locally, we have Davison Brothers and Friends Lake Inn, uh, uh, Martha's, Martha's D and D Ice Cream, uh, Queen of Hearts, uh, Sheet Labels, a, uh, a, a, a label manufacturer uh, in Queensberry, uh, in, in the old native textiles building, and I, and I pulled them up this morning, uh, uh, to kind of get a profile of this organization, but, uh, this l- label, uh, uh, company, uh, employs over a hundred people. Uh, so this, I think, proves and substantiates the value of LDCs and local development corporation in terms of job creation in, 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 in our, in our area. So, uh, um, I, I think that's important to, uh, to recognize and acknowledge them, uh, so, uh, so I, I, just another, another issue or two you, you mentioned, uh, again, I, I, I have to echo what you said regarding, uh, Supervisor Fraser, uh, Edna, we want her to get well and get back here soon, uh, the, uh, in, uh, uh, I, I co-chair the Health Services Committee, and so, uh, I, um, met with Janelle Jones, uh, you know, for about an hour last week, not, not really knowing, uh, kind of what the situation is in, 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 in terms of, uh, uh, Edna. So I sincerely hope she is, gets well, gets back, uh, the, uh, in talking with Janelle, I, 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 one of the on my years, you know, being, uh, on this board, uh, my, my, probably my favorite, uh, organization has been the visiting nurses. Uh, they, 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 they add significant value to, to our community, and, and in the city of Glens Falls, for example, twenty, twenty-two percent of, of, uh, home care services, uh, were provided to, uh, the, the residents of Glens Falls. So there's a lot of value here. And then when it comes to visiting nurses, uh, um, typically, this is the fam- this is a fa- typically a family that's in crisis. They have a personal type situation, uh, and to get the, the, the quality and the capabilities of our visiting nurses in Warren County to knock on that door to take care of that, that, that human being, uh, I, I think says a lot for, for our community about the services we provide. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County, uh, facilities met on September twenty-first. Um, we discussed various budget requests of building a code, plates and measures, airport, and building and grounds. We had no resolution request result that meeting. Will tell you that, uh, design updates for the front entrance and the whole area here are are continuing to be developed, the plans for that. And the magnetometer at DMV um, is available and ready, just need the, uh, sheriff department staff. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, Human Services, uh, met on September twentieth. Out of that, uh, that meeting, uh, there are no resolutions for, uh, on today's agenda. But as I've said before, that doesn't mean that Department of Social Services, Veteran Services, Countryside Adult Home, and Youth Services aren't hard at work. Uh, they certainly are. Um, we will next meet on, um, the twenty-fourth, I believe, um, around eleven o'clock. Um, it'll be a short agenda, uh, although I encourage people to, uh, to attend that. Um, as has been the practice, um, uh, the Commissioner of Social Services, uh, sends out emails out a, a report each month, uh, uh, Nina prepared and submitted her, uh, first report, uh, to the board earlier this week. You all should have received that, that email. And without objection, I, I'd like to invite, um, uh, the Director of, uh, Warren County, uh, Corporate Extension, John Bo to come up for a short one-minute presentation, beginning when he receive, when he gets to the podium.
Good morning. Thank you very much for, uh, having me up. I'd like, just like to report some, uh, news that we've, uh, recently uh, received a one-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from New York State Agriculture and Markets. This is a continuation of support that the state has put towards infrastructure improvement for agricultural fairs. And yes, we do actually have a fair. Um, it's very short, it's very small, but we do have a fair. Um, so we will be using that to make some improvements, uh, around the grounds, uh, with permission from the, the Building and Grounds, uh, Committee. And what we are looking at is a couple of, uh, new structures to help with access to our property, some stairs, uh, as well as a potential pavilion that will be used for multiple purposes. Um, the most recent, uh, grant was used for constructing a new building, um, at our office, and that, uh, is a multi-purpose building that we use for a variety of different programs, including indoor archery, uh, for kids, and we do have about four lanes in that building. So everything we look at, we try to make sure that it will serve multiple purposes for the county. Additionally, we are now back to full staff. So if you're anyone in your town needs information on nutrition, um, we do have a nutrition staff now back on staff. Uh, she's a registered dietitian, and if you'd like to meet our, two of our new staff, they are at the health fair over at the Social Services Building today until two. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. And that building was dedicated to Andy Sperry, former director. So, uh, it is a nice building. We were able to go up there and take a look at that.
That completes my, uh, report, sir.
Supervisor Drossi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee met on September twentieth. Uh, we had agenda items from Sun Council, the District Attorney, Emergency Services, Probation, Public Defender, and the Sheriff. As a result, before today, we have three resolutions, four forty-six, four forty-seven, four forty-eight. Four forty-seven, forty-eight are for grant agreements, uh, the first for the DA, and the second for emergency services. Four forty-six is, uh, to request a lease agreement for three thirty-three Glen Street for our Sun Council office. As many of you know, uh, the space downstairs is severely rented, so I ask for your support on those three resolutions. Our next committee meeting is coming up Tuesday at nine a.m. Thank you.
Supervisor Smith.
Uh, no report, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Merlino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and replace Supervisor Dickinson, I'm giving you a quick, uh, occupancy tax report, uh, with the help of Heather Bradshaw, Tourism Director, which revised, uh, to establish criteria for the expenditure of county occupancy tax revenues with the with, um, conventions, trade shows, and events, and that's, um, four sixty-one. Under tourism, we have just one, uh, Resolution four seventy-five, and that's the proposal to make the agreement with, uh, uh, Gen Energy Studios for two thousand twenty-four Warren County Tourism Travel Guide. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Trapp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a lot before you tonight, uh, Resolutions four fifty-three to four sixty. Uh, four fifty-three is to accept the donation, an electronic whiteboard from, uh, Doug and Patricia Power. And four fifty-four is to, in agreement with their ballot, for the purchase license maintenance of voting machines and software for the Board of Elections. Four fifty-five needs a correction, and when I'm done reviewing my resolutions, I will pass. Four fifty-five needs a correction and when I'm done reviewing my resolutions, I will pass unless there are objection. Commissioners McLaughlin and Ben F speak to some of these. So four fifty-five needs a correction. Four fifty-six is a lease agreement with Dominion Voting Systems or Dominion I accessible voting machines for the Board of Elections. Four fifty-seven. Would like to declare the remaining voting machines, Dominion Voting Machine Surplus and dispose of them. Four fifty-eight is to. Secure a one-time payment to Four Orange Press for printing expenses on behalf of the Board of Elections. Four fifty-nine is a local tax, local law, excuse me, imposing an additional mortgage tax in Warren County. Basically renewal of what we've had. Four sixty is adoption of privacy policy in terms of use for the Warren County website. Four sixty-one is reestablishing, whoops, that's Dickinson's. Okay, so those are mine. And just for clarification and amending one of the proposed resolutions. If there's no exception. Objection, I would like to invite Commissioners McLaughlin and Van Ness to the podium to speak to that.
Which resolution are they going to speak to?
Four fifty-five. Okay. Possibly some of the others that relate to the Board of Elections.
Good morning. First off, foremost, I apologize to the tire. If I knew we were going to be here today, I I don't want to sue, but. We were asked at the last minute to come over and and answer any questions that we have on the voting machines. As our our chairman said, there is a a few issues that have to be addressed on it. And number one is on the Resolution four fifty-five of two thousand twenty-three. The original statement was that we needed to terminate it. It's not a termination of that contract. It's a it's a reduction of that contract. If this board decides to go ahead and vote to get the new voting machines, it will reduce that contract from. Nine thousand thirty-two dollars a year to six thousand one hundred dollars a year. If we decide to go. So that's what the correction that our chair will be asking for. But overall, we were here today to ask for the funding. The contract passed in our board, but failed to pass in the financing part of it. And out of this, years ago, this board started a capital reserve project. For the purchase of new machines for this reason, for the purchase of new machines. The machines we currently have. One set of them were bought in two thousand six. The other set were bought in two thousand ten. And Beth can correct me if I'm wrong, the two thousand ten were the BMDs that are now.
Six where the BMDs.
Are now gone and they're the assisted voting machines. They're now gone and we're leasing a new type machine. That to be quite frank, quite honest, where it hasn't worked real well for us. These are all new machines by the Clear Ballot System. Out of that capital reserve. We have three hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-four cents in the capital reserve that can be used for the purchase of new machines. With this situation with Clear Ballot, the total contract comes to five hundred and three dollars, five hundred and three thousand nine hundred and one dollars. If we agree and sign the handshake agreement with Clear Ballot before October thirtieth. They will discount these machines by eighty-two thousand eight hundred and five dollars. That's what brings us to a total of five oh three nine oh one. So we have the three eighty-six, two ninety-eight-four in the capital project. We have twenty-six thousand in the Board of Elections from a tier grant that we're going to put toward them. We have another five thousand that's in our budget that will come out of our budget due to the maintenance that we no longer need for Dominion. And then we have another reimbursement coming from the Clear Ballot system that where this reduction in our contract is of thirteen thousand six hundred dollars. Leaving a set balance that the board has got to make a decision where they want to take it from a set balance of seventy-three thousand. Ten dollars and sixteen cents is is what we're looking for to finish the financing on these voting machines. Now, this Clear Ballot system, it's a voting technis- tech technology is the fastest growing system on the market with modern durable hardware. The innovative and easy-to-use software and the training library built for New York alone. They built this system. They've been around for years, but they built this system for New York alone. They were recently certified by the state of New York. Their continued focus as a company is on supporting the customers, Warren County, with great products and services. It's a it's a far more advanced system than what our twenty-year-old system is right now. It'll get us up to date. It'll take a lot of the issues that we're having currently with the machines. It'll take care of the majority of them, if not all of them. It will reduce our, hopefully reduce our budget at some point to where we'll have to use less. Less assistance from per diem workers. And with our new staff, we hope to be able to do it with just the new staff and ourselves.
Beth. I just wanted to say we've been with Clear Ballot since two twenty eighteen for our audit procedure and our absentees. And we can't say enough about their customer service and and the ease and use of their systems and the updates that keep up with the election law that. We see frequently in the last few years.
Open up. Does any supervisor have a question for Bill or Supervisor Brady?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So. Four fifty-five, you changed the terminology from termination to reduction. Is that correct?
Yes.
Correct, yes. And so I want to explain why we wouldn't be terminating it because we're still going to be paying six thousand dollars a month. According to the number, let me finish, according to the number you just told me. So. Why? Why can't we have the full termination?
We have a contract with them right now with our audit system. So we use Dominion to make our ballots. We have to send them the PDFs, Clear Ballot, and they turn it into a PDF so that their system could read the Dominion ballots. So they charge us thirteen hundred per election for that. So being when we go to their machines, that service will no longer be needed, but that contract is on the audit machine. So it's a whole different system for the audit machine.
It's on the audit machine and it's on our, it counts our absentees and our affidavit. It's the machine that we use to count that. Those ballots, because as we know, those those results cannot be released. Until election night. So in that system, we're able to. By state law, these ballots have to be scanned the day before early voting starts, the day early early voting ends. And then a week within a week after early or after voting stops, this system, this Clear Ballot system with sixty-one hundred with the reduction. Is a system that we use to. Count absentees, affidavits and our audit.
And when will that agreement end?
We have another three years on that one.
So. We have to have them for that. I want no other company can do that or the new company. We've got to stay with Clear Audit because of that reason alone.
No.
Clear ballots.
We like Clear Ballot because we've been using them from twenty eighteen for that. Part of our work, counting the absentees and then our audit on the Dominion machines. So they will, it will overlap two years between the new contract on the voting machines with the audit system.
That that's what I was going at. It seems like an overlap to me.
There is.
And and seventy-two thousand dollars a year, a lot of money.
It's not a year.
It's six thousand a year.
Oh, it's a six thousand a year.
A year, six thousand a year.
So not a month.
No, 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 no.
Well, that makes me feel a little better. So we had an overlap and we were paying seventy-two thousand.
No.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Anybody else with questions? Supervisor McGowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You went pretty quick on that. So. You're asking for five hundred and three thousand. The capital reserve has how much?
Three hundred eighty-six thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-four cents.
Now we'll just round it up to the number. Thank you. All right. And with all the credits and everything else, what do we? What's your bottom line that we?
We're short. We're short seventy-three thousand, seventy-three thousand, ten dollars and sixteen cents.
Thank you. Okay. And it didn't come to finance because.
We didn't.
I'll explain.
Didn't get a forum. I I we didn't. We didn't get a forum. Other there was. Got, I'm sorry.
That's the only reason why I didn't.
Now I'll let Amanda explain the maybe the procedure.
There was a forum of four people. In order for it to pass, all four needed to vote in favor, only three voted in favor and that's why.
Oh, all right. You know, because I I have, you know, concerns. It's not a whole lot of, you know, it doesn't seem like a whole lot of money compared to our huge budget, but we're in a very. Very difficult spot. You know. I feel right now where we're at in trying to finish out our budget and and figure out the money. So is this something that needs to be done today?
If if you want.
If you want, if we want to save the discount of. Eighty-two thousand eight hundred and five dollars. The machines, to be very honest with you, the machines have 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 got to go. They're not working properly. We have three right now, three of the lease machines that are down. And we had to bring in three spare. We've got to bring our early voting machines back in, reconfigure them, and we've got to bring our our spare machine in. Reconfigure that on these three, these lease machines. That we're paying a lease on and their comment to us was, well, we'll be able, we'll try to get out to you before Election Day. Well, that doesn't work. We need this stuff for Election Day.
I know you're coming down to Crunch Town and and you know, and I happen to always. Like the comment from Supervisor Thomas that would like to go back to the old machine. Because, one, we didn't have these expenses and over the years, as we've transformed from the old. Click, click, pull the bar and out. It's gotten very expensive to vote. On top of that, I feel it gets a little bit. It's hard to understand if it's really true. I I fully believe the algorithms in these computer systems can be glitched and nobody would ever see it, but. You know, I'm not a conspiracy theorist. It's just my own thoughts, but all right.
Thank you.
If it wasn't because.
Are you done or?
No, I'm not. Thank you. I I I believe in the importance of this and and I think we need to move forward and I, you know, I. It it's very scary at this time where we're at the budget, but. I'll have to reserve my vote until the time comes on this one, but I I'll have to make this a roll call.
Supervisor Thomas and Supervisor Shra wanted to speak.
Yeah, I have a question. Why do we need a programmer or a machine to count ballots? I don't understand.
Programmer?
Program.
We build our ballots. We have to build our ballots in house.
Okay.
That's where it starts.
No, but you're saying that we use in. Four fifty-five, the Clear Ballot program to count the absentees. I don't understand why we have to have a a program that costs us much money to count. Absentees.
It's a it's a whole nother standalone system. It's just like our EMS that makes our ballot. This is a system that just does absentee and affidavits. There are different ballot styles. So those those are programmed. So if they happen to slip through and get on Election Day, that Election Day machine is not going to read those ballots.
And the company prepares, as Beth said, they go out in a media. And come back and or go on a PDA and come back in a media, that company has to switch them over. And as she said. Each ballot, whether it be the early voting and general ballot, whether it be the affidavit ballot, whether it be the absentee ballot. They're all different ballot styles and ballot numbers are not the same. And that's so. One certain machine, if you tried to take the absentee and put it through the Clear Ballot system, it wouldn't go through because it's not programmed for it. Vice versa, on the Election Day machine, it won't go through because it's not programmed to take an absentee or an affidavit ballot.
Well, it seems rather convenient for some.
Well, the only thing I can say is, yeah, the only thing I can say is New York State election law since two thousand nineteen has had a hundred and thirty-nine law changes. If we could go back to the paper machines with the flip lever and everything else. We wouldn't that if you were telling us that's what our job is, it's what it is. New York State law is the ones that forbid it. New York State law tells us that we have to go with the electronic and machines that are.
I've never advocated to go back to the machines, the mechanical machines. I've advocated for paper ballots, same-day voting. Signature verified, count them by hand. That's what I advocate.
Okay.
Supervisor Shra.
Thank you. Well, thanks to Commissioners McLaughlin and Van Ness. We reviewed the Dominion system and its shortcomings and the need for a better system. So I sat through two presentations. One of them being Clear Ballot. And out of the two presentations, Clear Ballot was. Clearly. The voting system that offers a greater ease of use. Such as ballot productions, et cetera. Its internal protections and protections, I think, were excellent. And their updating system, very good. There's every reason in the world. To upgrade to Clear Ballot. And. You know, yeah, there is an expense to it, but if it means that we're going to have a better voting system. And it's easier on our Board of Elections. And it's more valid. Fine. I think we need to do this. Thank you.
Anybody else wish questions for Bill or Beth? Okay, we do we have some Supervisor Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I I agree with Supervisor Thomas. You know, I'd like to go back. Paper ballot, same-day voting, signature verification, that sort of thing, but. Fortunately, it doesn't look like that's the way of the future, you know. I'll support this grudgingly. I did go to the presentation and I was I was very impressed. With the new machines, the capabilities, reliability, et cetera. So. I will support. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Schmidt.
I I think I already know the answer to this, but I got to ask anyway. You mentioned it's going to solve a lot of problems that we already have. This was beta tested against those problem?
Yes.
That was beta tested against the problem.
Yeah. One of our main problems is with the ADA machines, which are the ICE machines. We'll test them. They're ink jet. One day, the next day we go and we had to do something with that ink. With the Clear Ballot, it's a standalone system and it's a. The ink is, it's a pressure, can't think of the word I want. So we don't have that ink problem. And it's an easier system to use for the accessibility from the. People that can't see, hear, and even without hands, it's an easier system to use in that aspect. And it is a standalone. Now with the ICE machines, if that accessibility is being used, it can't be used as a scanner. At the same time. So if a site, a poll site only has that one, because that machine has to be in each poll site. And somebody's using that machine for that accessibility piece of it, that scanner is down for up to twenty minutes. And that's hence, we also send out new machines for the most part to all our poll machines.
And that's our main issue right now is the accessibility machines. And as we all know with the accessibility, it's one of the. Top items on on any menu is accessibility for the assisted voting. And as Beth said, right now, as I mentioned earlier, three of these machines that are currently on lease. And been with us, I believe, two or three years that we took the lease out on these machines, new machines, three of those are down. And they can't guarantee us that they're going to be here to fix them before Election Day. Luckily. We can do a turnaround, a quick turnaround on our early voting and our one training machine to get those three three new different machines out.
And any other questions? Supervisor Runyon, you haven't spoken.
My only question is, so then does the dollar amount on this resolution change where it says not to exceed forty-seven thousand?
We're going to get to that is after I get all the questions. Did you have a question, John?
Yes.
All right.
So based on the information the commissioners have provided and assuming the Board of, the Board wants to go in this direction. A couple of things are needed. So Resolution four fifty-five, first, that's authorizing termination of the agreement with Clear Ballot. That one needs to be amended to change it from terminating the agreement to reducing the. That one needs to be amended to change it from terminating the agreement to reducing the agreement. And it's going to reduce it in the bottom, um, where it says, um, terminating, we would change it to reducing from nine thousand thirty-two dollars per year to six thousand one hundred seven dollars and ten cents per year.
So we need a motion to amend this uh resolution uh four fifty-five. Is that a motion by Supervisor Stroud? Do we have a second by Supervisor Merino? Discussion. Roll call or? Voice vote. All those in favor?
Opposed, buried.
Okay, so four fifty-five is now amended. Now back to resolution four fifty-four. That one authorized the agreement with clear ballot, um, and that's for the five hundred and three thousand. That one is okay, but there is no funding for the balance. So we'd essentially, essentially need to waive the rules, then authorize a resolution to appropriate three hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred ninety dollars and eighty-four cents from the money in the Board of Elections Reserve already. And then appropriate another seventy-three thousand, ten dollars and sixteen cents, I would assume from the general fund unless there's another place you want to take that money from.
So do we do that in one resolution or?
We need to waive the rules and then those two appropriations.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Stroud to waive the rules, second by Supervisor Wild. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye, okay. Opposed.
And then you need um a motion to appropriate the three hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred ninety dollars and eighty-four cents from the Board of um Elections Reserve, a eight ninety-eight to their budget. And then seventy-three thousand, ten dollars and cents from, I'm assuming, a nine oh nine, the general fund.
Fund balance.
Fund balance.
Supervisors, now on the motion, second by Supervisor Merino. Discussion. Supervisor Beatty.
So this went to finance, finance turned it down. Now we're waiving the rules, which everybody says, don't waive the rules. We don't want to waive the rules. But we go and waive the rules and now we're voting. I mean, the hypocrisy of, of some of the members of this board is, is appalling to me. Either we follow the committee and the committee, now they could bring it back to the committee, I guess, that's fine, but the committee voted against appropriating this. You, you told us just a little while ago, Amanda, that there was not a majority vote that day in the finance committee. So we just immediately now said, ah, so what the heck with the committee's vote? Let's just waive the rules, which we've been told time and time again, that's a bad thing to do. So I don't know. I just, I just get a little frustrated with the hypocrisy of some of the members that want to change the rules when it fits them and not when it doesn't. So we're not, we're not, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Wild.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to remind everyone, uh, and the Supervisor Queensberry, that uh if we delay this vote, it's going to cost us an additional eighty thousand plus dollars. So I'm, I'm not in favor of delaying it.
So Supervisor Shaw.
Yes, well, I'm going to second what Supervisor Wild just said. In addition, it was a very short-staffed committee at the time of the decision. And I think it's only fair to make this go forward.
Any else? Supervisor Beatty.
Yeah, um, I know that they said that they'd uh, they wouldn't give us the discount after that time. You know, I've been in business a lot of years and uh the old, you better do it right now or I will, I'll pull the discount. That usually, yeah, very rarely holds. But uh, so I, I think that's a little bluster on the uh, on the company's part to try to force the issue, but so be it. All right.
We have a. Yeah. Okay, well, call for a voice vote on this resolution.
Excuse me.
Supervisor McGowan, I didn't see it.
Thank you. Um. Well, it's good. I'd just like to uh state my concerns of uh where we're standing right now with our budget and um, I know it was set up for a reserve. I understand the importance. And, but I, I also uh agreeing with Mike Queensberry partner from to my right here, that um, you know, i- it was possible to hold off this until we come to a former um budget uh amount. I feel more comfortable in, in moving this forward.
Okay. We have a motion to waive the rules and we need to vote on that.
We already waived the rules. We just have a motion on the floor to bring.
We have the motion to bring this resolution up to the full board. All those in favor of bringing this resolution to the full board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Thomas, Mr. Beatty, Mr. McGowan, anybody else? Three opposed, it'll be in our resolutions. It'll be a roll call vote. We'll assign it a new number.
Yes, so four seventy-six is waiving the rules, four seventy-seven is its appropriation and it will be subject to a roll call vote.
Okay. Okay, we'll continue with committee report. Supervisor Wild.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personnel in our education met September twenty-eighth. There's two resolutions before the board this morning, uh, four sixty-five, four sixty-six. Four sixty-five is um a contract to provide medical exams for the sheriff's office. And four sixty-six is for legal support for the issuance of bans for countryside and DPW. And I appreciate the board's support on those two resolutions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McGowan, committee report.
Oh, yes, uh, thank you. Um. I, I am happy to say that I, I do have um quite, quite a bit to report uh today. Um, first of all, I, I was asked by the county to step up to speak for the uh the behalf of the donation or the money that we give, uh, Special Olympics and to be in the in the beautiful city of Glen Falls up there with uh Mayor Collins and the Special Olympics Committee and the President to speak for Warren County. Um, this is a, for me, a very special event. I have uh volunteered. Uh, I spoke last year and this year and I am proud to do it. I will be there uh this evening as uh I, I guess to bring in, in Clement weather, so we're moving it to the high school. Queensberry High School, which uh, but it's a, it really, it's a special event that uh is uh, some great feelings for me to, to, to be involved in and also, you know, volunteering tomorrow for uh two tours of the uh Bachi Referee, which I really enjoy to do. And if anybody has any time, um, you know, to have volunteers, they do need volunteers, but these, these athletes wear a card and it is just amazing. And over the years of being invited with the county there and, and, and volunteering, it, it is just amazing. Uh, the friendships and the, and the, and the memory and the, and the laughs that we've had. So uh, you know, if anybody has time, that would be great for that. Um, then also, uh, this year, uh, I volunteered another uh thirty-eight hours at the uh Warren County Bloom Festival. And um, yeah, I've done this for quite a few years and as I get older, it, it uh seems to uh go home and die later afterwards, but I, I just, I want to start off, I, I really want to thank so many people. This was the fiftieth year that uh the Bloom Festival um was involved and it, it, I don't think everybody realizes, some do, because they're involved, especially Supervisor Stroud is, is the in-depth that goes into putting on such a large, volunteer, pretty much volunteered, um, festival uh here at the county and, and with the environment. So I, I wrote a thank you letter for everyone, um, and and I got a little kickback and it wasn't happening. So, um, I, I found it very offensive that we can't thank people um for what they do if, if they sign up and get paid. It, it doesn't matter. It's the work and the involvement. And you know, I, I wore this hat and everybody says, this team weren't counting, you know? Uh, I get a lot of snickers out of sometimes and a lot of um other people, you know, don't understand it, but I'm part of the team here at Warren County and I stand up for the people, I stand up for employees, okay? And it, it, it just really lifts my feelings when I own something and, and it gets, it gets turned down because of whatever reasons. So I'm going to take this opportunity to go through the list and I want to thank the people. So I'm sorry for the length of this, but it, it has to be done and I would like to put it on the record. So first I want to start off with my guy here and the ten to fifteen volunteers that put this festival together. All right. And it really starts right after the following Bloom Festival, okay? So they put this together and here in the fiftieth year, you know, we had Highland Park Country Cup Gala, we had the, you know, which was the main draw. And the Pioneer Pilots that came in, you know, from all the way back to the early seventies. And the city grows fast for opening up, you know, their streets and the parade and, and the Cramble Park, right? And, and the town of Queensberry uh for what they did there. Uh, behind the town office over there was the ferry station for the, the propane and sometimes that long line that went along. It was, it was a lot of work and, and Supervisor Stroud and Valment over there, it was, it was great. Along with the involvement of, uh, another volunteer, uh, putting uh and making this festival happen for the county. So I also would like to reach out to the EMS, all right? The one that went to this EMS Saturday, I'm not sure, but I think it was close to two hundred thousand people that we had on that county airport and not maybe at one time that flowed through there, all right? That's a lot of people. And what goes into that to protecting these people? And when you're talking explosive gas, hot air balloons, wind, wind. And so, um, actually, and in the team at um Emergency Services, I put this uh Adarondex Bloom Festival Event Action Plan together, two or fifty pages long. Sorry, my ink went out um on my uh printer, but you know, this is just a front page. I didn't want to put it all and read it all because I didn't want to make this too lengthy. But you know, the special things to go with that because that's something I haven't seen over the years, but it's a fringe plan in case something went down. All right. So, uh, you know, on top of that, all right, we had a special trailer that was there, all right? I've heard two different names, Crow and Crow.
This board of supervisors meeting? Are you watching the board of supervisors meetings?
No, I actually just pulled up.
Please, uh, don't interrupt me. So, okay, a crow is a special trailer put out by Verizon as a repeater, cellular repeater on wheels. And this was set up for the first time that I've ever seen that. This is the first time that it was set up. All right. In case that when there was an emergency and everybody gets on their cell phones, that the emergency people can come through. I mean, that is just, it's just, you know, go over thought of that, but what a great idea. And that was, that was got over by Verizon, all right, at low cost to the county. So I really am trying to make our, our, our people say, so you know, we have a memory and, and team and actually with the Adarondex Bloom Festival, I also like to thank Bay Ridge Fire Company for their volunteer work. We had the Queensberry Central Volunteer Company there. We had the South Queensberry Fire Department there. We had West Glen Falls Fire Department there. We had the Kingsbury Volunteer Homes Company. Queensberry EMS, Landsberg EMS, Ford and EMS, Easton Greenwich EMS, right, Cambridge EMS, Penn and EMS. You know, we're all there. And the, the presence of emergency services, we had a look over the top. But we, and all prepared and I have to say, I, I believe any incidents that happened that were just minor, there was nothing major. Thank God, but everything seemed to flow. So I would, uh, special thanks to go to M A and her team and all the volunteers that were there. I would like to go over to the Sheriff's Department. Right? The Sheriff's Department, I had the opportunity to really work hard with them this year because it was a big event. There's a lot of cars and it's a short amount of time that they all have to move. So we had the patrols, and let me tell you, we were there at three in the morning, okay? And, and, and then late there at night, but I want to just go down through the list of officers to thank them that, you know, if they weren't at the Bloom Festival, but they are on the way of patrolling, I, I mean, I'm telling them to make sure everyone's safe. I mean, we had to go up to communications because they were on the line because you never know what's going to happen. And, and really thankful for, you know, I'm sorry for the correction officers that weren't able to go because they had to do their things over there watching the inmates. But I would like to go down and I apologize if I pronounce anything your name's wrong. It's just the way it comes out and you can call me personally and I will, I don't know how to pronounce it, but we have Jacob Kearns. Uh, Bradley Murphy, we had Michael Baker. All right, we had Nick Rosenberg, all right, we had uh Kevin Leighton, we had Robert Rose, we had Stephen, um, we had Jason, uh, let me, we had Daniel Henry, we had Richard. Sorry, which, um, we had Nicholas Murray, we had Sean Casey, we had Jeremy Coon, we had Tommy Kerr. We had, uh, we had, um, teams in Kirksey, um, Leah, Leonardo. All right, John. We had Patrick Holland, we had Donnie Lowery, we had Matthew. We, we had Ray Sanders, Michael Skyes. Like, 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 um, we have Michael Campbell, we had Billy, um, Metz, and we had William Green, we had James. Well, we had Sean Smith. And Harry, uh, Dugan, we had Brad Freeman. We had Christopher Bailey, we had Thomas. We had Williams Backus, we had Josh, Joshua Fish, we had Neil Wright, we had Colin. Wendy Coons, Tanner LaFarr, we had Dalton, um, Lloyd Way, we had Andrew, um, Andrew, um, Roberts, Freddie, Chris Bell, we had Craig Ray, we had Ronnie Gure, we had Tony Gure. We had Gregory Dunn, we had Michael O'Leary. We, we had Anthony, um, Green, we had Devon. We had Joshua Mopans, we had Charles. Uh, we had Scott, or my third name is Rocky Gure. We had Perry Coles, we had Gregory Sonny and, and John House. For investigators that we had on duty were, uh, Jesse, we had Jeffrey Gner, Gner, Ryan. And Tyler, and the investigator sergeant oppositions was Edward, Ed Farnito. And, and possibly anybody else that I missed out there, but really a special thanks uh for our show of Jim LaFarr and, and Terry Carle, um, the, it, it, just the teamwork out there of this, the, our patrol officers and, and just the presence. But if traffic had moved on and it is, it was really hard and they deserve it. Thank you for, for doing that. I'd like to jump over to EMS, I mean, uh, DPW. Which, what happened to that, my, my list there? Well, I have to do this at another meeting. I, I can't believe I might have lost that one. Um, I'll, I'll have to bring, oh no, here it is right here. Oh, so sorry, lucky hour. Okay, for DPW. Everything goes out to doing this, starting off with, you know, planning with, with Kevin Hayes and, and all his involvement. But I want to put out a really special two uh thanks out there for uh Kevin Hayes and his team. We have worked with them for years now and the teamwork and the respect that is out there and the hard work that we have to do. Um, or they have to do, I say we because I did the same things they've, they all did. But I want to put a special thanks out there for the team of Kevin Hayes and, and Robin, Robin Matt who got the airport ready to shut down an airport for an event like this. Um, you know, it, it, it's so much behind the scenes of getting there. All right. So I want to put a special thanks out to uh the Dirk, uh, John, uh, uh, Cossis, Coss, Coxis, they, um, remember, uh, and she was uh, really, she was there, I've been cooking that, Julie Keller was there, uh, just unbelievable, um, that uh, they're there, but you know, and, and. That, uh, they're on there, but, you know, and and has a. Phenomenal job of pulling this all together and the team that that please, a lot of people that that. And they do a great job. I I will say, um, when she knocked her helping that her knee is feeling better, she, uh. She did it, uh, on a bad knee and you could see the pain on her face, but she kept doing it because that's part of the teamwork. All right, we have Graham Justin, we had, uh, Agnes Josh, we had John Jofflin was there. All right, Claudia Braemer, Dan Reno, um, Nathan Eaton, uh, Jeff Monroe. Um, John Mendel, we had, um. Where was it? Todd Beal. All right, we had, uh. Frank Scotland, Scott Rogers was there, Colin Monroe, James Huntley. Barry Daly, uh, Jekyll. We had. Matthew Augusta and Mike Monroe, Kevin Rocker. And we had Brent Michael. We had Zach. We had Michael Terrance and Dennis McDonald. We had John Strong was there, right now he was bells on. It was great to to work with him on the, uh. On the the Hix roadside, so, uh, Nancy Ross, we we snuck her out of a little bit of retirement. To come in and help us out with her knowledge. We had Rick and Kenny, we had Logan, McKenna, George, George Curtis. We had Daniel Quick, we had. We had Troy, we had Cyrus Tucker. Zach Thor, we had Lex Wallace, Letsy Henkel. We had, uh, Henkel. And we had, uh, Jessica. John Suntliff. And Ben Driscoll was also there with his bells on. And I just. Thank you, you know, for your time and listening to this, but I'm I'm sending out personally from Brad McGowan Supervisor at Large for the town of Queensberry. A thank you because this is what I feel was needed. To thank everybody and our volunteers and supervisors that were there to make this such a success. So thank you very much for your time. Uh, that's it from like.
My turn already?
Yeah.
Okay, no report.
Okay, supervisor ready. Uh, we pull back, can I measure?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thirteenth and fifteenth of September attended the NISAC Fall Conference. Tammy Dealer and so was recognized for completing the NISAC Leadership Program. Which is a two to three year program designed to prepare county leaders for challenges of the future. Supervisor Leggett also attended and Supervisor Braemer completed her year as chairperson. Of the Resolution Committee by presenting her final slate of NISAC Resolutions. Sixteenth of Sep- of September attended the Wheelwalk of Women of the Lake luncheon. Where our own Janelle Jones, the Director of Health Services, was announced as this year's recipient of the Mary Fuller Award. For Women Helping Women. It's an annual award and it's the highest honor Wheelwalk of this bestows on someone. Named for the co-founder of the Wheelwalk Center for Women. Uh, twenty twenty first September Committee Meetings, twentieth of September attended the. Official kickoff for the balloon festival in the Highlands and the twenty first Crandall Park. And the twenty second and, uh. Hosted our first County Youth Task Force Meeting. With Workforce Development, Mental Health, DSS, Health Services, County Attorney. Sheriff and a number of youth focused organizations in Warren County. The focus of the task force is to try to address some of the challenges residents, parents, schools and our youth are facing. Uh, and I'll be honest, it's a daunting task. We will continue to need to come up with strategies to help. Broadening our group, uh, to include superintendents and principals from various school districts. And other nonprofit organizations. On the twenty second of September, uh, Supervisor McGowan didn't mention that I was, uh, on the main road. Directing traffic with my flashlight and my vest and probably facilitated. Ease of entrance and departure from the balloon festival. That was a lot of fun. And, uh, just a great activity and I agree, uh. Congratulations to our vol- volunteers who helped. Twenty fifth of September, I toured SUNY Facilities with Anne Marie Scheider, the VP for Administration and Finance. Mark Moran, the Director of Facilities at SUNY. Um, Supervisor Bruno and Kevin Hayjos were also there to get a better idea of some of the capital projects. Challenges that SUNY will have in the future, uh, and there will be a joint Warren, Washington County tour in the future. Twenty fifth of September, visited with Jamie Munyon at the Open Door Mission to further discuss some of the issues with area youth and learn more about the services they provide. I toured the location for our Code Blue Shelter this winter. Uh, Open Open Door intends to continue to provide Code Blue services for the county. Uh, and they're doing a great job over there. They're setting up a separate area for this, uh, in the Open Door Mission. Twenty seventh of September was our final migrant task force meeting officially to close out any remaining discussion items. At this time, we do not anticipate a large group of migrants being relocated to Warren County. Uh, I'll continue to meet with local groups who may be interested in hosting individual migrants, uh, or migrant families in our area. Twenty eighth of September, attended the Warren County Senior Picnic at the Fish Hatchery. That was expertly sponsored by our Office for the Aging. There were a hundred and eighty five seniors there as well as thirty two vendors or organizations. Who provided valuable information to our Warren County seniors, of which I'm one. Uh, I encourage everyone who hasn't been to the hatchery, it's just a beautiful place to go and, um. Uh, like Chairman Garrity said, you can go out and play frisbee golf. Twenty eighth of September, and I attended the, um. ARCC Ad- Adirondack Regional Chamber Commerce Mixer and Boat Landing Brewing. Company, these are great opportunity to discuss county challenges with private sector business owners. To get their perspective on county issues. Twenty ninth of September. Attended the Warren County Interagency Collaboration Committee Meeting sponsored by DSS and chaired by Nina Mastriani. Had an opportunity to hear firsthand some of the youth challenges from superintendents, principals and other educators. And public service personnel. There's about a twenty five percent absentee rate in our schools. It's not just here, it's across the country and everyone's struggling with this right now, but, uh. And it's probably the impact of COVID, uh, on our, but I think the impact of COVID overall on our area youth and parents is yet to be fully realized. On the second of October, I had an outbrief with our auditors. Uh, this is twentieth year in a row that we've had a clean financial audit. Congratulations, our treasurer sitting, uh, in the audience. And. Basically, it's it was just, there were some minor issues, uh, reported in the management letter that have all been rectified. But it's just a phenomenal accomplishment to have a clean audit. Uh, when I worked in the federal government at NSA, we tried to get a clean audit. For about eighteen years and we never did, I don't believe, so, uh, that's a phenomenal accomplishment. Fourth of October, uh, visited, uh, New York State Office of Community Renewal, uh. Monitors Countryside Adult, well, the Office of Community Renewal OCR, which monitors, uh. Countryside Adult Home, uh, they came to see the work we've done. Uh, it was a great visit with no discrepancies and the monitors were pleased with both the administration of the project and the end results at countryside. Uh, fifth of October, attended the Forward Together Conference at Lake Placid that is sponsored by the Lake Champlain Lake George Regional Planning Board. It's a second year for this conference, uh. It was attended by Matt Simpson, who gave the keynote address, uh, Supervisor Leggett and, uh, Tracy were there. Along with members of our planning team, the half day program focused on new community planning efforts throughout the region. State and Northeast. Uh, topics included transportation planning for Main Streets. Um, Recreation Economy for Rural Communities, uh, and Main Street Economic Plans and Small Business Assistance Plans. On the tenth of October, I visited with Major Steve Carroll, uh, the new commander of the Salvation Army in Glens Falls. We discussed the meals for the aging program that's going exceptionally well, uh, and it will continue. Uh, I also learned that, uh, Steve and his wife Delia both have degrees related to youth services. Uh, and, uh, that's probably a great, uh, opportunity for our community. These folks have come in and they know a lot about challenges faced that our youth are facing. Are they going to set up an archery program that they can take away, take around to various schools? Uh, to to after hour programs and they also plan to have a martial arts program as well. Uh, I think they're going to be a great fit for the community. Eleventh of October, um, had my inaugural breakfast with the administrators from Warren and from Washington. And Saratoga Counties, uh, all three counties are facing budget challenges this year. Uh, we exchanged info of mutual interest and we'll continue to meet quarterly. Um, on the sixteenth of October, visited with Jason McLachlan at the Wait House to learn more about their youth programs. Uh, Jason's on our youth task force, um, visited their offices and their shelter. And. Uh, I I have to, uh, I'm going to get choked up when I start talking about that a little bit, so I'll postpone that till later. Seventeenth of October, had my first meeting with our EMS experts to discuss the various ways our neighboring communities. Counties have addressed their EMS challenges. We'll continue to examine options to. Meet some of our EMS challenges in the county. It was interesting to me to learn that both fire and waste removal are deemed essential services by the state, but emergency services are not. On the nineteenth of October, a number of us attended a webinar sponsored by NISAC, uh, on how to stand up for shelter. And I'll add on that, that was not very effective, unfortunately. Nineteenth of October, attended the Tri-County United Way Hundredth Anniversary Gala. At the Queensberry Hotel Supervisor Strout E Two and Supervisor Driscoll. Our own Liza Oaks, Oaksendorf was recently selected to serve as the Chairperson of the Executive Committee. Uh, and that's, I'll I'll just have to say that. This past month, I visit a lot of organizations. We, uh, and last night it kind of brought it home. They have a lot of people who do a lot of great things in this county. Uh, volunteers, uh, Supervisor McGowan talking about, uh. Uh, just all the things that people do. We, I'm humbled, uh, when I meet with these people and I think we should be be very pleased. With the massive number of volunteers we have who are trying to make lives better for us in Warren County. Operation Green Light kicks off in November. It's a campaign launched in twenty twenty one. This is designed to show support for our nation's veterans, to raise awareness for the county role and providing support and resources to veterans. And advocate for legislation. During November, the front office of the mu- or front entrance of the municipal center will be lit with green lights. On the fourteenth of November, coming up at eleven thirty, the Economic Growth and Development Committee will meet to hear a presentation for our con- from our contractors. Who've completed our housing study and they'll be there to answer questions about the housing study. I encourage everyone who's interested in housing across this county, uh, to try to attend, uh, will. You know, you can, uh, log in and watch it, uh, on YouTube. Uh, but that's the final presentation on our housing study. Have some employee anniversaries. Uh, with twenty years, Jason Palmer from the Sheriff's Office. Also with twenty years, Jennifer Quarters, Countryside Adult Home. Uh, twenty one years, Michael Husky of the District Attorney's Office, twenty four years, Maureen Taylor. Of Social Services, twenty four years, uh, Claudia Mendel of, um, the Treasurer's Office. And with thirty two years, Amy Bigburn of Countryside Adult Home. And interesting to me, when I looked at this report for this month, two thirds of the names on this report. Have less than ten years of service and that's a good thing for Warren County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County Attorney.
Good morning. I start with a reminder and an update that tomorrow, Saturday, October twenty first. Uh, is the annual real property tax auction for Warren County. Registration begins at eight AM. The auction will begin at ten AM here at the Municipal Center in the Warren County Courthouse. Uh, there are currently, uh, as of this moment, twenty eight properties. That will be going up for auction tomorrow. This week, my office received two. Motions from two former owners of properties. That were in the tax foreclosure proceeding this past year. Seeking to the court, the Supreme Court to intervene and vacate the judgment of foreclosure. Uh, my office filed opposition papers on both of those motions based on state statute. Which does not provide Warren County or the County Treasurer any ability. To. Or what legal right to accept payments at this point. In time from any prior owner of a property. Uh, the matter came before, uh, our Supreme Court Justice yesterday afternoon. And the Supreme Court. Uh, entered an order directing our Warren County Treasurer to accept the payment of past due taxes for each of those two properties. Um, and then upon payment to return the property to the prior owner. Uh, Warren County did take title to all of those properties, uh, I believe it was on October eleventh. Uh, a third property came off this week as well due to the filing of a bankruptcy petition. Should any additional, uh, legal actions occur between now and the close of business, we'll make sure all parties know. Prior to the start of tomorrow's auction. And that's it on the tax auction. The remainder of my report, uh, has to do with a. Significant and substantial amount of activity that's occurred in lawsuits and litigation matters. And it's my, uh. Request for the benefit of the supervisors, uh, to keep this meeting, uh. To a reasonable time as well as my own personal physical safety. Uh, to defer that entire report to the Personnel Committee Meeting that's coming up. And it will be a very substantial report as there's been a, uh, a very significant amount of activity. On a large number of cases in the past thirty days. So if anyone is interested in getting that update. Uh, it will be at the Personnel Committee Meeting. That's coming up and that would be my entire report for today, subject to any questions.
Any questions for the county attorney? Okay, at this time, does anybody else wish to speak on Local Law Number Six? Saying none, I will close that public hearing. Uh, re- communications.
We have Capitol District OTV Financial Reports dated June thirtieth and July thirty one, twenty twenty three. Warren County Auditors Real Property Tax Correction Reports for August and September twenty twenty three. Independent Auditor's Report for Year Ended December thirty one, twenty twenty two. And a Notice of Public Hearing from the Mountain Lakes Regional EMS Council. Regarding the Queensberry EMS Application to the Mountain Lakes Regional EMS Council for Approval to Expand Their Operations to Cover Pilot Knob Fire District and the Town Board. Yep.
Bringing up resolutions.
Proposed Resolutions number four forty five through four seventy five as well of four, as well as four proclamations. And the Report of Committee on Assessment Roles were distributed to the members of the Board of Supervisors and posted to the Warren County Website on Tuesday, October seventeenth. The four proclamations before you are number thirty six, Fire Protection Week. Number thirty seven, Green Light for Military Service County, thirty eight, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and thirty nine, Youth Substance Abuse Prevention Month. There are also the two resolutions that were brought to the floor earlier in the meeting, which are four seventy six and four seventy seven.
Any public discussion on resolution? Anybody from the public wish to address any resolution? Okay, supervisors, discussion on resolution. Supervisor Thomas.
Yes, I'd like to go back to four seventy seven. Uh. Unless I'm confused about something, I don't see where the math works. Uh, if you take five hundred and three thousand nine oh one and you subtract the discount of eighty two eight oh five, that's four hundred and twenty one thousand.
Four fifty, I think the discount five oh three.
Excuse me, you, you have a question, Frank?
Yeah, I want to know if 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 five oh three is the price, you take off the discount, you don't need this much money.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The clear ballot contract, uh, that we were given was five eighty six, uh, seven oh six. Uh, the discount they've offered is the eighty two thousand. Uh, the discount they've offered is the eighty-two thousand eight oh five, which brings the final amount to five oh three, nine oh one. Uh, and that's the amount will be charged for the contracts if we don't, uh, according to the contractor and, uh, the Board of Elections, if we don't enter this contract, uh, before the end of the month. The total contract amount goes back to five eighty-six, seven oh six.
Okay.
I guess.
I guess if we had this in writing in front of us, we, we would know what's going on. So that was my question, I would request the roll call on, uh, both four fifty-four and four seventy-seven.
Four seventy-seven is all right.
Four seventy-seven is all right, four fifty-four, Frank. Uh, Supervisor McGowan is next.
Yes, thank you. Not sure when we can bring this up for discussion, it's not a resolution, but it was on the, what I, I mentioned up earlier when I was shut down.
Now, we're going to stick to resolutions.
Excuse me. Is there any possibility during, uh, the thing today so we can, uh, get that discussed?
We can bring it to Personnel Committee.
No, I'm, I'm.
They're going to bring it to Personnel Committee, I've talked to, with the County Administrator, we'll bring your request to Personnel Committee.
Thank you for the shutdown again.
Supervisor Runyon.
Thank you. My question is, if the clear ballot group, if this contract does not go through, and I don't mean with the discount, I mean at all, if it doesn't go through at all. What happens, are we then going to rely on the machines that they're having issues with? What would the Board of Elections do if this doesn't pass?
Oh, uh, yeah, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I believe, um, they've gotten to the point where they don't believe they can continue with the Dominion machines after this, so if this doesn't pass. Uh, they're going to have to look for some other type of a contract and probably go back into reviewing additional voting machines. But the Dominion machines are no longer going to meet their needs after this year.
So that'll be a crunch between now and November seventh.
Well, no, this, oh, I'm sorry, this election, they'll continue to use the same machines.
Who else had questions down through there, anybody else? Supervisor McGowan.
Yes, thank you. Uh, you know, that's a good point that, um, I'm glad, uh, Supervisor Runyon brought it up and there was a clarification, this is not for this year, even for next year's elections. So, once again, we're in budget and we're trying to crunch every number we can. And I believe, uh, as supervisors, we should be really focusing on how we can do that in reductions. And, and as Supervisor Bailey said, you know, um, I won't be buried by company season, but if they also want the business, maybe they'd continue that. But I believe I would like to have another month, so I will be a no on this.
Any other discussion on resolutions, any other requests for roll call Supervisor Diamond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution four sixty-four, I got a question on the bid tabulation sheet. Um, looking under the bids, Cassellus. Are they paying the county a hundred and fifty dollars a ton for newspaper or are we paying them to take it away?
We're paying.
How did you guys arrive at these numbers? Newspaper, magazine, cardboard?
They were requested by all the transfer stations and they provided some.
They requested it?
We requested it from all the transportation so we could put it in as part of.
Those, those numbers that you requested, these tonnage numbers are extremely high. Based on the market.
Supervisor Diamond, those, those numbers that I have are from all the transfer stations. I reached out to every transportation and asked them what their numbers and that's the same numbers that they submitted to New York State D E C as well.
Any other requests for roll call votes? Supervisor Bailey.
Yeah, I'm just checking, do we have a roll call vote on? Did Frank ask for four fifty-four?
Yes.
Four fifty-five and four fifty-six.
You want fifty-five and fifty-six?
You want fifty-five?
Yeah, because they're all tied together, I think that would be appropriate.
So four fifty-four, four fifty-five and four fifty-six?
Yes, thank you, Mike.
Any other requests for roll call? Saying none, let's vote on the resolution.
Yeah, I just need to. Resolution four fifty-five, making supplemental appropriations. Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Runyon?
No.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Beatty?
No.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Hey, that passes with six hundred and forty votes in favor. Resolution four fifty, um, enacting local law number five of twenty twenty-three entitled the local law creating a partial real property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
I recuse myself.
Uh, that res- that passes with seven hundred eighty-seven votes in favor. Resolution four fifty-four, authorizing agreement with Clear Ballot Group for the purchase license and maintenance of voting machines and software for the Board of Elections. Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Runyon?
No.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Beatty?
No.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Okay, that resolution, just double check here, that passes with five hundred fifty votes in favor. Resolution four fifty-five, this is amended from the floor to, um, amend the agreement with clear ballot to reduce the amount per year. Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Uh, no.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Beatty?
No.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with five hundred sixty-seven votes in favor. Resolution four fifty-six, authorizing termination of lease agreement with Dominion Voting Systems. Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with seven hundred fifty-eight votes in favor. Resolution four fifty-nine, enacting local law number six of twenty twenty-three, a local law imposing an additional mortgage recording tax in Warren County. Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yeah.
Mr. Beatty?
No.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with seven hundred fifty-eight votes in favor. Resolution four sixty-seven. Authorizing appropriation of funds from the Airport Repair and Project Reserve to the Department of Public Works Budget. Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred forty-seven votes in favor. Resolution four seventy, authorizing appropriation of funds from the Computer Reserve Budget to the Information Technology Budget. Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred forty-seven votes in favor. Resolution four seventy-one, authorizing appropriation of funds from the General Fund Unappropriate Fund Balance to the Sheriff's Budget. Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yeah.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred forty-seven votes in favor. Resolution four seventy-seven, this is the appropriation of funds from the Board of Elections Reserve and the General Fund to the Board of Elections Budget. Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Beatty?
No.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with five hundred sixty-seven votes in favor, need a collective on the rest.
All those in favor of the rest of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Did you?
I'd like to make the comment. Sure. And you called a roll call before I can get a comment. On, uh, four sixty-four, like Mr. Diamond, uh, mentioned. This resolution hurts a lot of small towns that can't afford to have roll-offs of their own to take the waste out of our landfills. And a lot of towns that have and can afford a roll-off save a lot of money by not paying these kind of prices, but we have nothing to control this, so. I have to grill with Mr. Diamond and I think it hurts a lot of little towns. That's all the comment I have, but it was already passed, so.
All right. Any announcements? Supervisor Bruno?
I'd like to, uh, let everybody know, there's a groundbreaking ceremony this afternoon at three o'clock, fifty-seven South Street, this is for the, uh, five million dollar event in Market Center, this is part of the D R I, which is the Downtown Revitalization Initiative. That started, oh, I don't know, back in twenty fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Ed Bartholomew, um, at the time, late at Bartholomew was successful in getting a ten million dollar grant from the state, now there were only three, four, or five of those at the time, Glenn's Falls, through his efforts primarily, was selected to receive that grant. And this is the first large expenditure of that. So, uh, it's a, it's a big accomplishment, will be a big accomplishment for Glenn's Falls and that's groundbreaking is three o'clock this afternoon at fifty-seven South Street. Thank you.
Any other announcements Supervisor Driscoll?